Good evening, this is Wednesday, August 28th, 2024. Call to order, the Town Hallis Planning Board meeting at at 7 o'clock. Now, we'll start with a roll call from my right to left.
Nick Hebert.
Tom Wackowski.
Heather Sullivan.
Greg McPherson.
Seth Davis.
Butch.
We welcome Butch as our newest member.
Welcome Butch. I'm impressed that you decided to come, decided to join us.
So, looking at the minutes, we have no minutes to review as of tonight. So, we'll jump right into old business. Tonight, we have Evelyn's Way, proposed three lot subdivision off of Deerwander Road. Austin Fagan from BH2M is here to wrap this one up. You want to give us a brief 30-second overview of the project, just for everybody on Zoom?
Absolutely. So, as I said, my name's Austin Fagan. I'm here with BH2M representing ELW Properties LLC. The proposed project is a three-lot subdivision, private way off Deerwander Road. We've gone through a few iterations with the projects, receiving comments from the third-party review engineer from the town. We did receive comments last on August 13th recommending that there be an update to the cost estimate and the road maintenance agreement. Those were provided to staff on the 22nd, and they're probably in the packets that you have right there. Additionally, I know there was a few questions with code enforcement officer. We haven't heard anything back, so we're assuming no news is good news. The attorney had put some input in terms of a topic that was brought up at the public hearing, I believe, in terms of a clause in the deed. It was found that the project is allowed to happen, it's just a clause trying to circumvent subdivision for Butters. Other than that, it's the same project you've seen a few times now, and happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
So, we had two things to follow from last meeting, one being a cemetery on, near the site potentially. The town court enforcement officer checked on that and determined that it was outside the needed buffer zone.
Perfect.
So, we're good there. And then, we also had a letter from the attorney, like you said, stating that the clause that was brought up at the public hearing didn't necessarily apply the way the public viewed it. So, long story short, legally, we are good to move forward.
Let's see, 50-foot front and 35-foot, so you can still be within 10 feet of a property line for a septic system based on the plumbing code? So, septic systems can go outside of that dashed building envelope.
Okay. I guess I'm good.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. It's good to have some new members voicing some opinions.
Yes, it is.
Any other comments? Concerns?
No.
So, at this point, we are looking to move forward with the project, looking for a motion.
Are we considering it complete, or are we putting it for approval?
Approval. The application has been complete for a couple meetings now.
Motion to consider the application for Evelyn's Way subdivision approved. Motion to approve the Evelyn's Way subdivision application.
There you go. Looking for a second?
Second.
All right. To do so, we're just going to go over the standards of approval real quick. Everybody can look to their page 78 of their zoning ordinance, number 7.7.5.
It's nice they all have the same.
Give you guys a second to catch up.
Do you mean this one she just gave us, or the old one?
Nope, the old one. The one she has given you, proposed updates for November 2024. You want to look at the one that is dated?
What is this one?
Yeah, that one, page 78. Yeah, the wrong one, Tom.
7.7.5.
Correct.
I was just looking at the subdivision one.
All right. So, for this project, we are going to, we have a list of a few things here we're going to go over. All performance standards in this ordinance applicable to proposed use will be met. The use is consistent with a comprehensive plan. Public resources identified in the comprehensive plan are related to study, including aquifers, shoreline areas, wildlife areas, and access there to are protected. We have all of our buffers and natural resource protection in place to be in compliance with that. The use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. If you guys want to kind of jump in with reasons why these are all.
Yeah, they've identified wetlands, and they're avoiding any.
Unnecessary impact.
Thank you.
Perfect. The use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies.
There are no water bodies.
Access to the site from existing or proposed roads is a safe and adequate. The proposed use will not aggravate or cause undue traffic congestion. Sufficient parking and traffic circulation on the site of development will avoid conflicts with adjoining properties and streets.
We have road commissioner comments, and then Butch asked a question. Were you satisfied with the answer to the question, Butch? Were you satisfied with the answer to the question?
About the radius?
Yep.
Yes. Yeah, I understand the property line was a 90-degree, but you're going to have a rating.
Yep.
And we're accessing, it's a hammerhead.
And also, on the site, there are specified no driveway areas on the hammerhead itself, so that will appease future fire chiefs. The site design is in conformance with all flood hazard protection regulations, and any proposed construction, excavation, or fill will not affect a water body's ability to store floodwater.
There is no flood hazard protection on the site. There is no requirement, there is no need for flood hazard protection on the site. Would that be the right way to say it?
There's a stormwater management plan in place would be the correct.
There we go. There's a stormwater management in place.
Adequate provisions for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste have been made. All sanitary and solid waste are treated in manner approved by qualified professionals together with agreements necessary for the transportation disposal and storage of hazardous materials.
They have a septic way.
Test pits were completed for potential septic for each site as well. Perfect. Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous material has been made.
I'm not aware of any hazardous material that's been identified.
Stormwater drainage system capable of handling a 25-year storm without adverse impact in adjacent properties has been designed.
Engineer.
There's a level spreader on this project to disperse the stormwater.
Spreader.
Adequate provision to control soil erosion sediment have been made. Building locations or engineering measures ensure that wetlands and water bodies will not be adversely affected by erosion runoff or pollutants.
It's in the plan?
There is an erosion control note in the plan. There is adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use. If we sell well drillers' letter beginning of the project. Development provides for appropriate buffering of adjacent uses where there is a transition from one type of use to another for, in for the screening of mechanical equipment, loading, service, and storage areas. Parking lots buffering must be designed to provide a year-round visual screen to reflect the character of the area.
There is no.
Same usage.
Yeah.
The adjacent properties are like use?
Yep, and it's still, I mean, we've got, they've got a good enough buffering.
The use will not deplete or degrade adjacent water bodies or supplies. The use will not adversely burden existing municipal infrastructure. General, less than 400 parking spaces, so. Adequate provisions for fire protection have been supplied for the intended use.
Houses are required to have sprinkler systems.
Correct. Are there any other conditional uses that the board feels necessary to apply to this before we approve it?
Nothing outside of the standards.
I think any concerns have been discussed.
So, a couple of conditions of use I think we should apply, that the engineer give inspection reports of all that the project meets standards as designed.
What time?
Prior to building permits issued. So, we're going to be looking for gravel depths, especially in the roadway, obviously. Do you guys typically work with your customers for compaction tests? I know this is going to be a private road. Dwayne, get your opinion on this one?
Yeah, hey, sorry to butt in, but, and the other thing that you can let Austin know is, is before we can issue the first CO, that their approval, their engineered plans, we got to have a statement from them saying it's at that point now that, you know, it meets their engineered plans, so we can do the first CO. We won't provide a CO until the road meets their design. In the past, that hasn't happened. We got to stop buckling down on that.
Yep. Yeah, so, that's what I was saying, the engineer report certifying that the project meets your standards.
Correct.
Did you guys have compaction on your plans? I don't remember, Paul.
Typically, there's something looking for 95% proctor. I know projects in the past haven't had nuke tests or any density, but if that's something that the board and the code enforcement officer are looking for, happy to require that as part of our certification.
I guess that's a conversation the board to have if we want to require compaction tests. We have it in the past. I think we should on any road that intends to be a public road. This is going to be a private road, so there is, but still, we in HOA, so is it our duty to ensure that it's everything we can do to make sure it's up to standards?
Is there any? There's no, you said, upset.
Dwayne?
Just a quick question. So, will this be eventually able, the town will take over, meaning the trash truck will be able to get down there?
Geometrically, a trash truck could get down there, but I don't believe this qualifies for public road standards.
Correct. We were told this is not intended to be a public road.
Okay, private only. Okay, thank you.
So, I guess that's a conversation for the board. Is that something we want to move forward in the future, from here on out? Problem, Austin, we've had is some issues in the past, so we're trying to correct it moving forward.
Understandable. I think it's a good idea.
So, where it's not intent.
Any input? Is everybody familiar with compaction tests? I guess that's a good place to start.
It's a great place to start.
If it's going to be, now, the developer and the builders can say it's going to be a private road, but when the tenants get on the road, they petition the town to have a public road. Now's the time to have bore samples and tests like that that be presented if there's a request made for this to be coming down.
So, I guess, great with the great thought, Butch. Does everybody understand what a compaction test is?
No.
No. All right, so, Austin, I'll let you.
Gotcha.
I can, but you probably have some better.
What will happen is there will be a geotechnical company that goes out to make sure that the media or the aggregates that's used is compacted to 95% of its total available compaction, so that, you know, it's not, it more or less becomes an impermeable surface when you compact it to 95%. There's no water that's getting through. It's very dense. It makes it so there's a lot less susceptibility to frost action if water might get down into the pores of the sand somehow, or the gravel itself. Relatively straightforward test.
Long story short, it's just to ensure that the gravels are compacted in with the idea that it won't be washing away, and it'll hold up to intended use.
So, is the plan to make, from here on out, every road, private road, for a subdivision, have a compaction test?
That's what we're discussing.
Do we have anything that says we can require it besides just a blanket? We can add on things that we feel necessary?
We do have street standards. It is a note in here, I think, in the plan that it will meet. This would just be a test to verify that.
Would that come into play, though, if somebody wanted to change their private road to a public road? Now, they would have to, they would have to present that kind of test result?
It's really hard to do after the fact. With in-place materials, it's hard to get, it's a lot easier now. It's better to do it now because it won't get less compacted over time.
Yeah, I mean, you're the professional.
I would suggest it. It's not very cost prohibitive. So, in your report, please include compaction tests on sub-basin base for up to, with 95% of the proctor being the standard.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Findings of facts need to be registered with the, what did she say?
They have to go on the plan?
Yep. The findings of facts need to be on the plan, recorded with the registry of deeds. All road inspection reports go to the CEO in the planning board for file, and the bond amount will be 125% of the estimated cost. So, anything else from the board? Hearing none. Do you want to amend your motion to include the conditional, conditions of use?
So moved.
So, Butch, for your, just for your knowledge, when we vote, we vote from my right to left, and then I vote last in case there's a tie, to not put that on anybody else. So, Nick, how do you vote on approving Evelyn's Way as a approved subdivision in Town Hallis where the conditions as stated?
Yes.
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 Seth?
Yes. I vote to approve.
So moved.
Thank you.
So, we'll get that copy, and we'll get it all signed.
Yeah.
Probably next meeting.
Got these right here for you if you want them, or we can drop them off to the office, whatever works for you.
I believe the findings of facts have to be put in the.
That makes it easy, then.
So, if you get those put on there, and they're dropped off to the town, we'll get those for next meeting.
Sounds good to me.
Appreciate it often.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Were you taking notes?
No. She's going to have to watch it. Unfortunately. She can now get transferred to a transfer that would be awful.
What do you got for new business?
Okay, I'll look into it.
So, do you want to write that? Write it down. Here we are, this one, I'm over. Inspection reports. For the road.
Now, it has.
Before any.
Before any.
Building permit.
Yeah.
Was it bellyburnt, stiffened occupancy? Dwayne was going off COs.
If there's single houses.
Okay.
Question mark.
So, inspection reports, compaction testing.
Yep.
And then, the standards that Angela already.
Yep.
Okay. Standard, standards.
All right, new business. So, I've got two things. This is probably the last meeting to review the ordinances before they go to the warrant article. Everybody has just received the red line, blue line version. So, what is, kind of, hopefully, this buzz through is real quick. Not looking to make any changes unless there's some, an error made at this point in the game.
Butch, are you up to speed on what we've been doing?
Probably not.
We have been going through the zoning ordinance over the last year and a half now, and just trying to clean up anything. So, there was some, you know, language that is inconsistent over time, just things got added with difficult language, or different language that made it hard for us. So, we're in the middle of that process. We have not yet addressed, like, the definitions and the actual.
Use stable.
Use stable. So, but, and we had done some of this work, part of LD 2003, so this is just like a continuation of that.
So, we'll just run through these hopefully pretty quick.
So, we're doing miscellaneous, and are we going to return and go into the open workshop?
I think we should do this at public, publicly.
Yeah, that's what I. Our intent was to do this as part of the meeting.
Okay, all right.
We have some votes to take on this kind of stuff, so we're no, we've already workshopped all this stuff, so now we're kind of finalized.
Double checking it.
Yep. So, the first change is page six, removal of additional town ordinances. That was just a cleanup to get rid of some language of ordinances that are no longer in the town ordinance. You can skip the definitions section because there should be no changes there.
All the way to.
Same with performance standards, so there should be no changes, as those are future changes, hopefully. That should bring us to section seven, which is on page 75. Page 83, 7.9.2.3. Removal of letter of credit. Intent was this to, so forms of guarantee for projects when that would be escrow account or performance bond, a letter of credit will no longer be suitable. That's all the changes in the ordinance itself.
Motion to, motion to approve recommending the changes as written on this draft for being included on the ballot of the next election.
I would say there might need to be a numbering review if you want it to be perfect.
We do.
Page 29, 3.7, goes to 3.72. There is no 3.71, 3.7.1. There's probably other little ones. I think I saw another one.
And does it go all the way down?
Yep, and it will go all the way through three.
3.75, so that'd be really 3.74.
Well, luckily, we can also make changes like that without going through.
Oh, yeah, that's just administrative. Well done.
Okay. Looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Any additional comment? Nick, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So moved. The planning board recommends to the select board that zoning ordinance of the Town Hallis Main draft changes, 8/28/2004, be added to the November ballot. Which brings us to the next form of new business. The warrant article has some items. That involve the planning board.
These copies?
I do know that I will read them, if that works. I apologize. We are, so the draft warrant, I'll read them all just because it's a good time. Draft warrant, number one, shall a charter commission be established for the purpose of establishing a new municipal charter? We have no standing on that one. Actually, I'll just read the ones that, shall the Town of Hollis adopt the shoreline zoning map? That's the number three on the draft warrant. Looking to see, looking for a, planning board recommends or does not recommend on, shall the Town of Hollis adopt the shoreline zoning map?
Motion. Oh, go ahead.
No, you're good. Go for it.
Motion to recommend the town vote to adopt the shoreline zoning map as presented to us last meeting.
I'll second.
Any comment?
No.
Nick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, so, the planning board recommends that the town shall adopt the shoreline zoning map. Number four, is the Town of Hollis in favor of ceasing allowance of cluster housing subdivisions? We'll take a two-minute break.
I make a motion that we do not recommend.
Can you, can you say that again? Sorry, I just tried to write down the way it was worded, so I don't.
Number four, is the Town of Hollis in favor of ceasing allowance of cluster housing subdivisions?
Is it, I have so many questions. Is it, is it going to be worded like that?
This is the wording that I have been provided.
So, against would be continuing to have it in?
If you vote yes, you are ceasing cluster subdivision.
If the voters vote yes. My motion is to do not recommend that the voters vote yes on this. So, keep clusters.
So, you are, you are saying that the planning board does not recommend being in favor of ceasing allow.
Is it silly that we can't make sense of this? That's the most deceptive thing ever.
It's not deceptive.
It's absolutely deceptive. We can't figure it out as we're sitting here, trying to read it.
Most, um, seconded?
I would second it, yeah.
I went for a vote for Butch to come back. We'll take a two-minute recess.
One and second, we can talk about it now, though. We can discuss it.
Oh, do you have more?
Do you have anything to say?
No, I have nothing else to say. Everybody knows how I feel about it.
We'll take a short recess till Butch comes back.
We'll take a recess.
Yep.
Go for it.
Thank you. Apologies for the short recess. So, Butch, to catch you back up, we've had a motion on the table that's been seconded that the planning board does not recommend draft warrant, item number four, is the Town of Hollis in favor of ceasing allowance of cluster housing subdivisions? Do you have any further comment on the matter? Nick, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So, so moved. The planning board does not recommend the Town of Hollis be in favor of ceasing allowance of cluster housing subdivisions? Number six, shall the Town of Hollis amend the zoning ordinance, section 1.5, as recommended by legal precedents based on Brooks and Al versus Town of Bar Harbor, 2024, main two? This entire section would be changed in the current zoning ordinance, and it'd be available for public review prior to the vote.
1.5?
1.5.
Oh, this is about, so currently, in order to amend the zoning ordinances, there has to be a majority vote of, excuse me, by a two-thirds majority vote. If the amendment is not recommended by the planning board, it only has to be passed by a majority vote if it, if the proposed amendment is recommended by the planning board. And I believe, I know very little about the actual court case, but word on the street is that the two-thirds majority vote is not necessary, is not legal.
So, 1.5.1, what they would be eliminating is A and B. So, 1.5.1 would read, this ordinance may be amended by a majority vote of the ballots cast at a town meeting. 1.5.2 would then be changed to, if the ordinance will be voted upon in a referendum, the planning board shall hold a public hearing and approve the final wording of the warrant article at least 60 days before the date of the referendum. The final wording of the ordinance revision to be voted on must be complete and available prior to the start of the absentee voting. If the, 1.5.3, if the ordinance will be voted upon in an open town meeting, the planning board shall hold a public hearing at least 10 days before the town meeting, or by the time the select board will post the warrant, whichever is earlier. 1.5.4, prior to the date. Prior to the dates of one point five point two or one point five point three, the planning board shall approve the final wording of the warrant article and if indicated, make a recommendation in favor. Or against the warrant article. Uh, one point five point five, notice of public hearings for the proposed changes will be.
Try it.
Oh, try to.
Uh, the rest of this is kind of confusing, not written very well, apologize.
Why don't we have copies of this?
Uh, so we are having, we don't have a secretary at the moment, our secretary, um. Unfortunately put her resignation in, so we are without admin at the moment.
What's the court case that, that, that the, um, ordinance, uh, that the warrant article references?
Is it Bar Harbor?
It is. Based on Brooks.
Brooks, that's what it was.
Brooks first. That's six, town of Bar Harbor, twenty twenty-four.
Alright.
So, uh, I guess what does everybody have for?
That.
Comments on that?
I just wanna. See what the, what the court found.
Um, if anybody would like to.
Right. I mean, I like the two-thirds if the planning board doesn't recommend something, but if it is unenforceable, there's no sense in having it in there.
So here's, uh, this is part of the, um, packet that Angela gave us last meet, or we were given last meeting, Mary Hoffman, won by Angela. I have a copy here, I can pass around if people would like.
That'd be awesome.
I found mine, I didn't, uh. I didn't realize we had this last meeting.
Yeah.
I knew we had it, but.
Yeah, um. Basically, it does say that the legal opinion is that they suggest removing the two-thirds vote.
And this what, uh, the select board suggested?
Uh, no, it would be from the town attorney.
I like popular vote.
So I'll, I'll read you, um. The legal.
Okay, I got it, yeah.
I'll read, I'll read this sort of out, so if anybody doesn't have this. Uh, so Mary Hoffman originally sent the email and the response is as. Dear Mary, assume that the municipality adopted an ordinance with the provision, with this provision. If it did, then in my opinion, this provision is only advisory as to the next legislative body. Meaning that the next legislative body can choose to adopt amendments to this ordinance through a majority vote regardless of whether the planning board. Voted to recommend amendment. This is because it is generally accepted premise that one legislative body cannot bind future legislative bodies. As they're distinct and separate bodies, to avoid any cue, to avoid any confusion, however, I would suggest that the legislative body, town meeting, vote to repeal the provision.
So the memorandum does give a little bit more of an explanation, it says, um, if. We wanted to have that in there, the super majority referendum requirement, um, it should be in the charter, not in the, not by ordinance.
So that would be charter item.
Yep.
And there is a draft or number one, I believe, is shall the. Shall a charter commission be established for the purpose of establishing a new, be established for a new municipal charter, so. It seems like this isn't the place for it, um.
I'll, uh, motion that the planning board recommends this, recommends a yes vote on this warrant article.
Which one article are we talking about?
Shall the town of Hollis amend the zoning ordinance section one point five as recommended by legal precedents based on Brooks. This is the one that would, it would basically take the. Currently, if the planning board does not recommend an item for the warrant article, it requires a two-thirds vote from the town. To o- overcome the planning board's not recommend. This would remove that, and it was the lawyer's recommendation that that should be in the charter, not the zoning ordinance. Is that, everyone else understands this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're removing the two-thirds majority requirement.
And going to just a straight regular.
That's my, that's minority rule, is that.
To overturn, so if we were to recommend something right now.
This would not take effect until. So anything we are recommending today.
Anything we don't recommend.
Our recommendations, one way or the other, follow the rules as they are currently written, this would not take effect until. After, basically the next election cycle.
And the way they're currently written is if we were to recommend something either direction, the public would have to have two-thirds opposing.
Only if we, if we do not recommend, they would need two-thirds to overcome that.
And we're saying, it's, it's just a recommendation at this point and the public would have majority. Regardless of our recommendation.
Correct.
Would the public, would it have to be, would have to be a two-thirds vote in order to get it removed? Only if we said no to it.
If we, if we did not recommend, the town would then need two-thirds to vote to remove, the vote to remove two-thirds.
Got it.
Are there any pros to making the public have two-thirds to oppose of the seven of us?
If you, uh, no comment.
Okay.
Oh no, make the comment, come on, transparency and accountability, tell us the pros.
They're less educated on zoning ordinances than we are to look at it every day, or?
That could be one thought.
More, uh, the, the offices are more, a little bit more in touch with communication than general public generally?
When two different boards can't be on the same page about something for a town. They both think it's the right thing to do and they're either side, it's great that there needs to be more of a majority saying, oh no, we actually do want this.
Other than one vote to overturn?
Right. When you have a whole board of people and another board of people that don't agree on something.
But does this give the planning board more power than the town? In, in two-thirds of the, uh, one-third of the town?
It could be seen that way.
It's a tough one, I don't know. How's it written today?
Two-thirds.
Currently, if we do not recommend.
You have to get two-thirds to get it.
By, so I'll, so currently as one point one, or one point five point one reads. By a majority vote of ballots cast at a town meeting, if the proposed amendment is recommended by the planning board. Or by two-thirds majority vote of ballots cast at a town meeting, if the proposed amendment is not recommended by the planning board.
And has this ever been an issue for anything?
Yep.
Yes.
Other than?
This has been, this has been in place and used in the past.
And, and it's become an issue multiple times in the past?
There's been, there has been items that have been not recommended in the past.
Okay.
I don't have articles, I don't have the data in front of me, but. I do know that it has been used.
And was that really troublesome for the town at those times, but, or was it?
That would be question for the residents, I suppose.
And I vote stay as, or I motion stay as, I guess, as it currently is.
So we have a motion on the table. We did not have a second. We have another motion, or wasn't quite a motion, but.
I'll fold my motion, or take it back, whatever it's called, if no one's gonna second it, I guess it just dies.
We have two mo. Is yours a motion, Nick, to, what was your?
Yes. My motion would be keep it as it currently is.
So is your motion to the planning board not recommend?
Correct. Yes.
And we have, we also have a motion that the planning board recommends. Looking for a second on either.
I second that we don't recommend it.
Any further comment? Nick?
I mean, it's not enforceable.
The town can do illegal things if the town people vote that way?
It's like the tax levy thing. The state says you can't charge your residents that much tax, but if we, as residents, say no, we're okay with it. Then they can charge us more tax than legally allowed by the state. They've since removed that because. Who knows, but. I'm sure if it had two-thirds vote, they wouldn't have been able to remove it.
I, only problem I have with this moving forward. Is that it does kind of put the planning board at a. Above the, the residents.
Yeah, it's definitely a.
It almost seems self-serving rather than, um. For the people.
That's why my question was, has it ever come up as an issue before really for the public, or if it's only come up as an issue in politics? Uh, and it sounds like the public hasn't, hasn't heard about it, so.
I, I couldn't, it's hard to speak, uh, for the town as a whole.
Yeah.
When was it, do you know when it was put into?
Nineteen.
Oh, is it that, is that long ago, right?
We have the information somewhere, I believe. Fairly, it's, it's been in there for quite a, quite some time. So.
See, I'm on the other side, I feel like it protects.
It, where it says by a majority vote ballots cast at a town meeting, that's a meeting.
That's a warrant.
So, uh, that's on. So we don't do town meetings per se, we do, um. Private, you know, private ordering, so when you come in here and cash your ballot on.
We've done some town, we've done town meetings.
Yes, we have.
We do special town meetings. By town meeting, they mean, I think they mean warrant.
Yeah.
Okay.
So when you vote November and June, that's what they're talking about when they do town meeting. I don't know, can it be applied to special town meetings when they hold?
So the way it is written, there was a.
But we wouldn't even have a, planning board would never, there would be nothing that the planning board would not recommend that would end up on a, that would require a special town meeting. There's, I don't think that, because that's.
If the ordinance will be voted upon in an open town meeting, the planning bush, planning board shall hold a public hearing at least ten days before the town meeting. Or by the time the select board will post the warrant, whichever is earlier.
Yeah.
And we would still have the chance to recommend or not recommend.
Right, right.
But it would not hold the weight of change, require, changing the number of votes required to make something pass.
Right. Because a special meeting is more of a, a special thing, it's not emergency, but. Needs to get done quicker than June and November.
Usually time-sensitive items.
Right. And that negates the two-thirds vote, it just goes back to a normal majority.
Even if we, even if the planning board voted against it?
For?
In a, so something that came up in a special?
In a special, if the planning board voted against it, it would just go to a normal majority. Majority vote, it would not be a, two-thirds needed.
We could, we could still give the recommendation.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
I mean, wouldn't you, wouldn't then you would just make sure that anything that you were concerned that wouldn't get the two-thirds, you would just do it at a special town meeting? I mean, there's a way around it.
We can't call a special town meeting.
No, they, uh, the select board would, yeah.
It's my opinion if.
Yeah, if they want to do that, then that's their thing. That's pretty shady, but yeah, I don't think that we ever have to worry about that, because we have a very straightforward, honest, transparent, accountable select board. We're fantastic leaders of our town.
It's my opinion that we should give the power to the people and let them vote and, uh. Majority rules.
Yeah.
But that's. We all have equal votes here on this table as well.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion and it's seconded, any further comment? So the motion on the table, and Nick, do you want to repeat your motion?
Uh, I motion to keep, uh, one five one as is, and.
Motion to not recommend.
Nick's to not recommend, thank you.
And we had a second.
And I seconded it.
Alright, uh, Nick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Heather?
No.
Seth?
Yes. No.
Do you keep a tally on that?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I got it.
So you have to.
Are we have a tie right now?
If you yes vote, you tie.
No, he doesn't have to vote.
Oh, you don't have to vote? You can stay.
Yes, 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 no, no, correct?
That's correct.
No.
So yes gets it.
Perfect.
Oh, wait.
So if the planning board is not.
Don't you only vote in a tie?
No.
Oh, okay, so now we're, use it, no, so now we're at a tie. Then how do we break a tie?
I don't know, we only have, we need more members. Or, or less members.
Sword fight, it's dual. Pick your champion, uh, we have to, and we have to recommend or not recommend tonight.
So last. What's that?
So, I will abstain. Cause I had. It has been depressing.
Well, if you've got a feeling, I don't think you should abstain, just so that it doesn't come out of the tie vote.
It's fair, in the past, the chair has not voted and only voted on.
To break a tie, not to.
Break a tie.
Make a tie.
It has been my stance that I should vote and A, be the tie breaker, if there is one. Here we are in a situation where it doesn't work.
So in this situation, would we just be silent?
I guess so.
So then we wouldn't recommend or not recommend, we would just let it go without.
I'm.
I'm good with that.
I can say.
Motion to let it go without a planning board, um, recommendation.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Want some motion now?
To let it go to the warrant without a planning board recommendation on what the residents should do. So we're not saying you should.
So you're not gonna weigh in on any warrant article at all?
No, just this one.
Just this one.
And we allow the public just to vote and majority vote, if they keep it the way it is, they keep it the way it is, if they. If they pull it out and change it to majority, they change it to majority without our weight on it.
Uh, we had a second, I believe?
Yep.
Nick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Butch?
So a yes vote. Is gonna let it be a majority. At the town meeting.
No, a yes.
We're not making any recommendations.
Correct.
Yeah, so we're, we aren't making a recommendation, so whatever the town votes.
Majority.
So it's major, yeah, yes.
Yes, on this subject.
Uh, so, um.
Yeah, only.
On the draft warrant article, number six.
Should we ask them to put specific language, planning board?
No.
You'll leave it.
We will not be, we will not be supplying the select board with a recommendation for number six. That was all the new business that I had, any other new business?
Just wanna say that was the greatest way to agree to disagree.
Yeah, that was, yeah, no, I agree.
Thank you, guys.
That was awesome.
Um, any other new business? None.
It looks like, uh, don't we have something on the agenda, we've got a, um, solar?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Miscellaneous, so we do have a solar project coming down the channel shortly, so please be aware of that coming down the line.
For this group, what do we have in our zoning ordinances around solar right now? Might wanna brush up a little bit.
Newer?
We have approved solar project, what are, we've approved, I think, two, to my knowledge, or to my memory.
I have not.
Uh, we approved, uh.
He wasn't here.
I bet there was a couple of solar projects going on already.
They are, but they've been approved quite some time ago.
Yeah, okay.
I remember one.
You want me to read the definitions of solar stuff?
Nope.
Sure.
You to tell me what the, what the.
Performance.
Oh, and the performance standards.
What the provisions are around them, just, I would, my recommendation was just that maybe we should familiarize ourselves with what our ordinances say about solar. To be prepared for that.
Are they in the sixes, Ed Sue?
Yeah.
Well, now, we'll be getting information on that coming up, so if everybody wants to, kinda go over that between now and then. That is on page sixty-nine.
Seventy-three. Six, three, three?
Page sixty-nine, number six point three four, solar farms, you're in the wrong draft.
I am? No.
No, Tom is.
So do the brand new one?
The one you gave me tonight.
That's not the, that's not the one that is voted by the town.
Eight twenty-eight, twenty-four?
That's a draft for the November.
Yeah, we're not even, that's not even gonna be in place until November.
So the, the one dated seven twenty-four?
Yeah, the old.
Correct.
The one dated, should have been dated last election.
What page do you say?
Sixty-nine. Six point three four.
Got it.
This shouldn't be dated.
It is dated, yeah?
No, it's not dated.
Awesome, so we'll be looking forward to information on that coming down the line. Next meeting. Um, I don't really know. I don't really know what's going on next meeting without, hopefully we have some answers on our admin.
It'd be great to have a secretary.
Yep, or Southern Planning or something.
Anybody.
So we will need to start looking at the pieces of the zoning ordinance that we decided to push.
Yes.
To the, not the November election, but the June election, which is definitions, performance standards, and the use table. So I don't recommend, we talk about that tonight, but we should, we will need to get started on it.
And there's a couple of things from the last meeting that we pushed out for votes too, right?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
I did get an email from Dawn, he has some input, he'd like to weigh in on that, so.
This is the.
Residency requirements for ADUs.
Is that the only one that we?
What sections are you talking about?
6.3.5, and that's regarding if, there are, currently there's a residency requirement for an ADU. We've been discussing whether or not to change that.
What were the other things that we, definitions and?
Use table and performance standards.
I think we also just were going to.
And we'll have an idea of how to change the subdivision after the November ballot as well.
Yep.
After, okay.
Nothing on that ballot for comprehensive plan, right, on November?
There's a, there is a draft article to get a.
Comp plan.
Oh, sorry.
It's a charter.
Yeah.
Draft a charter.
I thought there was a comp plan committee already.
But nothing, nothing's going in front of the voters in November?
No.
Okay, so we aren't going to have a comp plan?
No, we will not have a comprehensive plan. And I think part of that is because of, there was a conflict on cluster subdivision between the comp plan and a warrant article, so.
So Butch, our next steps are going to be section 2.2, the definitions, then performance standards, is that?
Section 6.
Section 6 in general, and then the use table.
Which is a separate item.
And then what's the ADU? Which one was that in?
6.3.5.
6.3.5, so that'll be, we can just do that as part of the performance standards, right?
It'll be mixed right in.
And then, didn't we also want to talk about whether or not we want to do economic opportunity zone or something along those lines?
TIF zone?
TIF zone.
TIF zone.
That's very involved.
Mm-hmm.
Very helpful for bringing business into Hollis, though.
Yeah.
I will let the board know, I requested from staff, from town staff, some data on, so I, I requested data that spans a 10-year period. I'm looking, we are looking to see number of subdivisions approved during that time, number of cluster subdivisions approved during that time, number of business licenses issued during that time. What was the other one? There was one more. Oh, accessory, number of accessory units approved during that time, so that we can look, so, and then we get, I did this, the 10-year time span. So we'll have three years pre, three years precluster, so we can see what it looked like precluster, and then what it looked like postcluster, to see, remember how we were like, are we really even doing, oh, that's what it was, growth ordinance, that's what it was. We're trying to get a sense of what, whether or not a growth ordinance is actually something we should be.
If it's even necessary.
Yep, yep. So, you know, they're very busy over there, lost a staff person, I don't expect that data to be to us soon, but she is going to give it piecemeal, so when I have it, I'll share it, of course.
Awesome.
Motion, next meeting?
Yeah.
Would it be helpful or appropriate to invite someone who had part in writing LD 2003 to come in?
So we had Southern Planning here, when we were working on anything that was applicable to LD 2003?
A person who draft, who drafted LD, LD 2000, LD 2003, that's just one person's opinion, one person's intent. So I don't, you know, I, I'd rather, I care more about what our residents want than what someone in Augusta. Yeah, than, than what a clerk in Augusta decided to use for like, or, or what the intent was.
It wasn't better for him, but yeah.
Southern Planning was very unbiased about their opinion on it.
Right. That was sarcasm.
Yeah, that was good.
Yeah. So, next meeting, we'll be putting an agenda out prior to the meeting, if you look out for that. We'll need some more information prior to getting that together, so.
Motion to adjourn?
We got the next meeting planned, September?
11th.
11th?
We don't have anything.
Next meeting is September 11th at 7:00 PM.
December.
September.
I wish.
We are meeting. December 11th, here, make sure it's on a Saturday. December 11th is a planning board meeting.
Is it really?
Yes. It's not the next planning board meeting. Looking for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes. Any opposed, hearing none?
Thank you.
We have to do a public comment.
Do we have, did we have any members of the public?
Was there anybody on the public?
Public comment was not on my agenda.
It was on public meeting, yes.
We already adjourned.
We already adjourned, we can't do it.
We have to reopen it. There's no public comment on my agenda.
Sure is, it says public meeting.
No, we can't do a workshop because we don't have a secretary.
No workshop.
If we had a secretary.